Four, three, two, one. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, November 2nd to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first selectman's report. As of earlier today, the Health Department has reported two new COVID cases, bringing our 14-day caseload to 14. Our 14-day rolling average for Darien is 4.6 per 100,000, keeping us in the yellow alert level. There is, however, a discrepancy with the state's interactive map. If you go on there right now, it says the rolling average for the period of October 11 through October 24 is 8.5 per 100,000. This information does not match what's been reported through the state's portal to our local health director, and so he is investigating that this evening with the state health department. There are nine confirmed cases in our school population as of this afternoon at seven different locations, and there are 179 school community members in active quarantine. We are working on arrangements for additional testing days before and around the holidays. We know that college students will be coming home and other people will be undoubtedly traveling into Connecticut, so we want to make sure that we have testing availability and quick turnaround times for those people that need it. So I'll give you more information about that, but I anticipate that kind of having that week, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving week to the day before Thanksgiving, to have some good additional testing times available. Today Governor Lamont announced that Connecticut will be rolling back to a modified Phase Two, given the increase in COVID cases, in an effort to stay ahead of the curve and avoid overwhelming our hospitals. New guidance will go into effect at 12:00 a.m. on Friday, November 6, and includes the following: Restaurants are returning back to 50% capacity indoors. In-dining must close by 9:30 p.m., but takeout and pickup are allowed beyond 9:30 p.m. Eight people maximum per table. Personal service establishments can remain at 75% capacity. Religious gatherings are back at 50% capacity, capped at 100 people, and virtual services are encouraged. Performing arts centers and movie theaters will be capped at 100 people. Event venues will be capped at 25 people indoors and 50 people outdoors. And he's recommending, some people call it a curfew, but he calls it a "stay home, stay safe" time period from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. He is recommending that all social gatherings and event gatherings end by 9:30 p.m., and he's issuing this guidance in collaboration with our neighboring states of Massachusetts and Rhode Island. As far as I know, because Kate hasn't told me yet, we have no news on our STEEP grant application. Awards were supposed to be made by mid-October. We requested $92,000 in support of landscaping and installation of a pollinator pathway at Highland Farm. The town match for this grant is $8,700, which we appropriated already for the landscape design, so it's disappointing that we didn't get that information before the election. I'm really happy to announce that this Friday, our Town Hall Generator project will be complete. That project has been 10 years in the making.
Wow.
But what that means for Town Hall is we will, should the need arise, we will be able to use the Mather Center as a shelter area, which was always the vision of the Mather Center, so that's really fantastic. I want to draw your attention, if you haven't already seen it, to the November-December copy of the Darien New Canaan Rowatton Magazine. There's an awesome spread in here about Darien's bicentennial. Author Elizabeth Hole did a fabulous job, really looking forward to keeping this in the official town records and to be part of the bicentennial time capsule. So if you haven't seen it, take a look, it's really very well done. And tomorrow is Election Day, as you know. If you're voting by absentee ballot, please return your ballot to the town clerk's office or drop it off in the secure box in front of Town Hall by the close of polling hours tomorrow at 8:00 p.m. Our registrar of voters have worked very hard to prepare safe in-person voting if you're planning to do so. And no matter the outcome of tomorrow's election, we will continue to work together in a respectful bipartisan manner to serve our community as we always do. Thank you, Kate.
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. Any reports this evening from selectman liaisons? No? Kip?
I do. On Thursday, October 29th, the bids for 23 of the 26 trade categories were opened at ONG's office, broadcast as a virtual event to the town. The Office of School, Construction, Grants and Review, SLAM Personnel and Consultants, the ONG AP Construction Team, Rusty Schreiner and myself, and all of the bidders. The remaining three categories will be opened tomorrow, Tuesday, November 3rd. A total of 109 bids were opened, with the number of bidders in each category fluctuating from a low of two, that would be food service equipment, to a high of 11, which is in the site work area, which is the most expensive of all the areas. The 23 categories had a cumulative budget of $43,965,000. However, the total of the lowest bids received was $38,204,000, 38,204,700, which was $5,761,000 or 13% below the budget. A total of all the second lowest bids was $2,724,000 or 6% below the budget. So in either case, we bested our budget by quite a bit. The three categories that remain have a total budget of $5,715,000, and we are cautiously optimistic that they will also come in under budget. The categories are painting, communications, and electrical fire alarm and security. Please note that the owners' soft costs, budgeted at $8,737,000, are not included in this bidding process. However, there will be bidding on furniture, telephone systems, and technology equipment, all of which are in the soft costs, at a much later date. The next step for the ONG AP Construction Team is to engage the two lowest bidders in each category in a thorough scope review, taking about two hours for each interview. These were started on Friday. They went on again today. The scope review process ensures that the bid fully covers that portion of the project assigned to it, as well as verifies the agreement on any alternate items and all of the administrative matters. The bid packages are quite extensive, in many cases maybe 20 pages long, which the bidders had to agree to all the items on them. This, let's see, excuse me. ONG AP intend to present at least four of the bid winners for critical trades, which are needed to start the project this month, on this Thursday at our Building Committee meeting for its approval. The largest dollar variances were site work, which was $736,000, $37,000 or 11% over the budget number, and HVAC at $1,498,000 or 22% below budget. So it really varied all around the place. Those are the largest dollar variances. The percentages are obviously, if it's small dollars, can be bigger. So that's what we're doing, and we're in the middle of scope reviews right now, and hopefully on Thursday, we will approve at least four of the critical areas to get started, with the objective of starting by mid to late November.
Yeah, that's really good news.
Yeah, so we're going to be under, we're going to be under our budget number, which is, which is good, because everyone said you have to go back to the RTM, the answer is no. Thank goodness.
No, that's, that's really, really good news. Thank you. Any questions for Kip on this report? Kip, I'd love to be able to attach your formal report to our minutes.
Kate has it.
Perfect. Okay. Moving on to new business, discuss State of Connecticut Plan Project at the Darien Train Station. Don't know if everybody tuned in to the October 21st, 7:00 p.m. public information meeting about the Darien Train Station. The project is really being driven by deficiencies in the platforms. It's, they claim that the platforms are in the worst condition of any station along the Metro North Line, so good that they're going to be replacing them. I know Kip chimed in with a bunch of really good questions during the, the meeting. There is a website that's dedicated to the project. I'm going to say it for people, you can find it online if you go to the town website, And all of the project documents are available there. You can find the comments, the public comments. Jim Cameron asked some great questions about the project as well, and the one important follow-up item that Ed and I are working on is meeting with Conduct to discuss the extension of canopies. They don't seem very agreeable to that, but we would like to discuss it in the context of if, if some financial participation from the town of Darien through the Parking Fund would be an incentive for them, that's what we want to discuss. So I want to open it up to the board for any questions that we can follow up on or comments about the project.
Oh, sorry, I was just looking for the, wanted to see where it was. So it's the extension of the canopy, is that what you feel that perhaps we would supplement the work that DOT uses?
Yeah, there's no extension of the canopies planned in the project.
Right.
But, you know, when you're, when you're replacing the platforms in their entirety, replacing the catenaries, it sure is a good time to look at some kind of a canopy extension. Especially in our COVID world, where people are not really going to want to go into the building to shelter themselves.
You mean longwise along the track, right?
Specifically on the New York-bound side of the platform. You really don't need it on, on the New Haven-bound side.
Yeah, okay, okay. So forward on the track then.
Yeah.
Was there anything else in the plan? I mean, I kind of, like, was watching the presentation, but was there anything else that Ed or anyone else felt the town would be beneficial that we would assume responsibility for?
Well, no, not that we would assume responsibility for, but I really do want to give kudos to Ed, who has worked really closely with Conduct on the project development to date. Because of Ed's involvement, we are actually getting new elevators instead of a refurbishment of the elevators, and protective encasements, because the weather seems to be what is causing the outages there.
And they're moving the?
The hydraulics.
The, the problem that I had with the presentation was that, there were three areas. The first was, they're talking about this new FRP, fiberglass reinforced polymer platform surface that can be heated. Wonderful. So you don't have to shovel it with snow and ice. I said, where, how long has it been around?
Right.
It wasn't available for the Rotten Heights platforms. Oh, they have a 50-year life with a 20, with a 10, 10 to 25-year warranty. I said, well, yeah, right. Having been in the plastics business, or actually the FRP business, I've never heard of them being used on a platform, on the outside. Usually they're used on walls. They're used interior floors at computer rooms, yes. Where you have the raised floor and you have all the cables underneath them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But FRP, and I don't care what they call it, I, I used to call it fiberglass reinforced plastic, they call it fiberglass reinforced polymer. It's new, and we're going to be the ones who have to maintain it.
Correct.
So I felt very, very strongly that we really ought to know what the real story is on this, before we say, okay, sure, put it in, and we'll just take care of it for the next 20 years. Because I have grave doubts about, you never want to be the first person to take on another technology. Secondly, the project is listed estimated right now, they're still designing it, $34 million. I asked, how much is the construction side of this budget? $21 million. And they got $1.4 million for escalation of material costs, which, that's okay, you know, inflation. They were using, I think, a 3.48%. But to balance, $11 million, or 33% of the cost of this project, is for engineering and incidentals. Look at the Ox Ridge Project. All of our soft costs, those are called soft costs, all of our soft costs are $8.7 million on a $63 million budget.
Yeah, so we're half the, twice the budget.
I mean, there is so much padding going on in that, in that number, you really have to say, why are you spending the taxpayers' dollars doing, I mean, where, where's all this money going to? The third area that bothered me was the idea of the generator. You have a new generator, it's about to start. You have natural gas here. Ed chose to put a diesel-powered generator here. Why? Because the cost of going from, when you had a certain size of kilowatts needed, to go from a diesel-powered to a gas-fired was astronomically increasing cost. The time you're going to use it to have savings in fuel is relatively minor. So the same question should be asked, do you really need a gas-fired generator? Now, it's, there's gas right there, they can do it, but I mean, at what cost to the taxpayer? Now, Ed's told me that the gas-fired generator, once you get it in, is a lower maintenance cost, which is our worry over time, which is fine. So, but those were the three areas that I, that I looked at, and I said, something doesn't, there's got to be a lot of work done on this process still.
I, I believe the comment back on the FRPs is that it has been used recently, though, on a station in the Hartford line.
On the Hartford line, and it's been used in Chicago apparently, and somewhere in New Jersey. But it's new. How is it going to last? Is it really going to last longer than asphalt and cement and oil? I don't know.
Well, I think, I think your comment is good about the maintenance thereof.
That's our job.
The longevity, the longevity, you know, the DOT and Metro North own the longevity issue, right? We have to, though, be cognizant of the maintenance.
The maintenance, right.
Yes. But I guess if it's heated, there might be some cost savings with maintenance.
If it's heated, you don't have to shovel, don't have to shovel it off?
Or salt or sand.
And put down salt and all that other stuff. I mean, it's a great concept, no question about it, but it's going to work.
All good questions.
So where does it stand now as far as the project goes? I mean, they're looking for feedback till November?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
So we can get back to you with, you know, if they heard things in the public comment, public information meeting, that, that they're going to react to and augment, change their plan. Ed come back and talk to us about that. Any other comments about the project? Things that you want to filter back through Ed?
I know he's concerned about the elevators.
Yes.
Big time.
Well, you know.
They're not working now, so they were.
Right. It's a real ADA compliance issue for us. Okay, if nothing else, then we will move on to new business item two, potential changes to Charter, chapters one to four.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Is there no chapter three and four?
There is a chapter three. I didn't really see a chapter four.
Town, Town Council is chapter four, relatively short.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
The Charter organizationally is unusual, I find. You know, if you're, if you're looking for something, an orderly document, that's probably not it. The one sort of global statement that I would make, Kate, and this is kind of an administrative thing about the Charter. In some places online, there are hyperlinks to things within the Charter. I would like if we could work toward hyperlinking to the applicable state statute that is referenced, because trying to toggle back and forth is difficult.
I think we can probably look at community code to do that.
Awesome. Thoughts?
I have a very stupid question.
Nothing stupid.
You have a charter and you have a Code of Ordinances. Explain the difference.
Okay. You want to do that, take a crack at that?
Not really.
Sorry, I asked.
Well, for one, the Charter is more difficult to change. The Charter is our rules that set the basic framework for the government. Ordinances deal with more specific things. You do see a lot of crossover between them, but the Charter, the process to change it would include a public hearing, any, you know, real public hearing, where the ordinances do not have to have that.
Yeah, I, one, one is a high-level framework document, I would say, and then the ordinances are sort of the enabling actions that can be taken within the context of the Charter.
But when I went in and I opened it up, looked at the very top, it says Charter.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that short, that short bit of information, that is the Charter.
I wouldn't say it's short, there's, there's quite a few, 26, I'm sorry, 16 chapters to it?
There, there's no question that the Code of Ordinances is a more substantive, more detailed document.
I must be looking at the wrong thing now.
You know, well, it says Part One Charter. If you don't open that up, you might not see the full precedent.
Okay.
So how do we change the, the ordinances? How do those get modified? Well, they still, everything has to go through the RTM.
Of both of which?
Yeah. It's just a matter of whether or not they have to hold a public hearing before making any changes.
Okay.
And, you know, there is another way to revise a Charter. You can have a full-on Charter Revision Commission.
Which we've had.
Which we've had. And I believe that one of the reasons the last time it failed had to do with the fact that if you change the Charter through that Charter Revision Process at, you know, at the polls and all, that's the only way you can change it ever after.
Oh, I see. So you set precedent for further modifications?
So because it was rejected, the RTM still has the ability to spot change.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I knew the Charter part, I wasn't sure about the ordinances, but I didn't realize that was also RTM. Okay. So in, in looking at, thank you, Kate, for helping us put together an orderly way to review. I think we'll probably move through the Charter section of the review in fairly short order. The Code of Ordinances will be another matter. So looking at chapter one, I don't think that we can really question our incorporation. Looking at chapter two, does anyone have any suggested modifications for chapter two?
I don't know there's really a suggestion for a modification as I didn't, you know, absent any other framework, I kind of just looked for things that were inconsistent, right? And we have the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Board of Ed, which I view as quasi-comparable boards in the town. They all have different number of members, and they all have different terms of say.
Wait, are you on two, or where are you?
Chapter two, officers and elections.
So you're talking about which, when they meet?
No.
No. How many members on each board, and how many years they're elected for? So the Board of Selectmen are five members.
Oh, I thought we were on section two, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Board of Finance is seven members for four.
Run chapter two, got it.
And Board of Ed is nine members for three.
Right, and you're the only ones where everybody's up all at once.
Yeah.
Well, you're addressing the quantity of members.
I, I was looking for discrepancies in terms of how comparable bodies appear. I'm sure there was a rationale for it when it was put together. Obviously, the way that it's set up with certain number of elector, a certain number of persons being elected on different election cycles seems to work out so that everybody doesn't come up for election on the same year, right? That, that seems to make some sense. I just didn't know if there was a rationale for this, or if there was any reason to, to consider doing anything with it, or we should leave it alone.
I think that I'd have to follow that with maybe a question to Town Council and see if there's some statutory language, enabling language for those different bodies that is not applicable here or noted here, to see why, for example, the Board of Education has so many more members than the Board of Selectmen.
Well, it's nine, seven, five, right? Nine for Board of Education, seven for Board of Finance, and five for Board of Selectmen.
Well, listen, it seems to be working fine, right? So I'm not, I'm not arguing.
It's just a question.
I'm not arguing this is not working. It seemed like a discrepancy, and I.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm curious, I'm always curious.
There'd be something behind it. So is our thought, we're going to go through these and sort of put things on the table and consider to take action at our next meeting or the subsequent meeting? Or if there's something that, like this, that requires some follow-up investigation? Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, my thought was to give you time to discuss.
Right.
And decide, you know, if there are things like, you know, to me, there are some things that are kind of no-brainers, like in section two, under elected officials, number, section four, four, that the town treasurer is the ex officio agent of the town deposit fund. The town deposit fund was made irrelevant 20, 30 years ago. That language could be just taken out, and there's no change in what the town treasurer does.
All right, well, but going back on, you know, section, chapter two, under 4A, sort of picking up on the quantity, is this the right number? Again, I'm not disputing or disagreeing with it. I was curious to have a conversation, do we feel that the entire board should be turning over every two years? I mean, I guess I would defer to you, Jamie, with all your experience, but to me, that seemed, we're not seeing that on the Board of Finance, we're not seeing that on the Board of Education. Does that put the Board of Selectmen into a scenario where literally five people could be walking in, France banking new? Is that the best interest of our town? It's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That, that was, that was kind of what jumped out at me, and, and the number of years. As we see four with Board of Finance, three with Board of Ed, two with our body. I would certainly welcome a discussion about extending the term for the Board of Selectmen to three years, because, you know, there's a big learning curve.
Yeah.
We have, you know, the scope, the agency of the Board of Education is huge, right? The budget's huge. But the scope of the, the different kinds of things that this policy board has to address, be well-versed and ready to address, there's a big learning curve, and I think three years would be a better time period, I guess. Okay, I don't question the number of people on the Board of Selectmen. And then the, the election cycle, I guess was the other. The number of years and then the cycle.
Number of years, and should it be staggered?
Correct.
Right.
That would correspond with the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed.
Yeah, I would say both of those sound more important than the number.
Yeah, okay, I would agree, yeah. Do some investigation first, of course.
I would agree about Kate's suggestion about the, the starting date for an elected official. It seems to be different ones, different dates for each one.
Under five?
It's subsection five, yes.
I agree.
Right. And just as a practical matter?
Yeah.
For example, the first electing is the town's purchasing agent. And we need an electronic signature from the first electment. So, and the town treasurer, there are signatures on the checks. So the last time there were elections contests for both offices, it was, I think, when Dave Campbell was first elected and Joan was elected, we had to get signatures for each candidate ahead of time to be able to send them off to the software company to be able to get the signatures. to get the signatures back so that we could continue to issue checks, because the turnaround time is so short. So it's also a very short, um, time if there's a change. You might have somebody coming, new coming in and have no experience whatsoever, and a week later, they're taking over. There's no transition time.
Right, so what would you propose, given that experience?
I would propose, you know, I would propose January, that would be me.
For?
For the Board of Selectmen.
For the Board of Selectmen.
And the treasurer. I would move them all, you know, if not to January, at least to December, give some time for transition between the old and the new.
With a mandated transition or something?
I, I like the thought process, I'm thinking about what the challenges would be with that. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, it's more consistent with certain federal transitions, but I, I do wonder why the Board of Ed immediately takes, you know, their new position.
Correct.
And there's, there's no time of transition for them.
Well, they have a staggered election.
They have a staggered.
So supposedly, you know, if you're, I forget how many are elected, is it three?
Three, three, three.
Okay, so you have six incumbents there to carry on.
You still have a corner for business.
Correct.
And, and that's also true of the Board of Finance, right?
Yep.
So, but you don't have, the way we're organized.
We had three new ones last year.
Or you could have, you could have five new ones.
Right. Right, that's where, to me, that's, that's my biggest concern about this body. But do we wait until January?
I think it's too long.
Do we move the first selectman, do we seat the selectman and wait on the first, or vice versa, I don't know.
I think that would be odd.
That would be odd.
That would be odd, okay.
Maybe consider December.
Yeah, December one.
That would give Kate, you know, three weeks to turn around any printing-related, you know, signature-related issues.
The, the strange, the strangeness of that, though, thinking about, uh, when a brand-new first selectman comes in, and then in December, giving a state of the town address.
Uh, yeah, there is that.
Right, so you have to think about that.
I thought you were going to give me that now in January.
No.
We, we suggested it.
Well, that could be then part of the, if we do December, the state of the town goes to January. So that would be part of the recommendation, that's the RTM's meeting, it's their meeting anyway.
Can I ask a question about, uh, section four?
Oh, I was.
Section four.
Did you have something else?
What was still on section? No, I'm still on four myself, you had.
Yeah, I was just, uh, you know, the, the town treasurer, in addition to salary, gets benefits as well, do they have a full package?
All the elected officials who are part-time or more, so who work in the office on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yes, they get benefits, that's not a charter issue.
Okay.
That would be an administrative issue, so, um, the treasurer's the only one who serves on a really part-time, registrars, I'm sorry, they serve on a part-time basis too.
No, I guess, I guess the, uh, question I was going to ask, or what popped into my head when I read it is, you know, they, uh, they, they work at Town Hall, they, with the exception of Joan, the other ones effectively report to you, they draw salaries and they draw benefits, which in my mind makes them a de facto employee of the town. So I was curious as to why they are elected officials.
That was sort of, I had the same question.
Rather than simply be employees.
I agree.
Why are they?
Yeah, simply be employees of the town, anybody who, you know, has a standard employment relationship with the town, I, I would think would be an employee.
So can I clear just one thing up? We, you know, we do, we treat them as staff, like when I have a staff meeting every month, um, the town clerk and the tax collector, the registrars of voters are asked to attend, but they don't report to me in that, like, if I were to say to Kathy Larkins, I want you to do this. Kathy doesn't have to do what I ask her to do, she's elected, she answers to the taxpayers.
Right.
I would agree with your, your statement, though, um, more from an administrative, practical point of view, Kathy is doing a terrific job, right? The next person that's elected as tax collector could have no clue what they're doing, be completely inexperienced, and that's the danger to me. Same thing, you know, in the town clerk's office, Karen does a terrific job, you don't know what your next person is, will they be any way qualified?
Right.
That's what scares me in terms of those positions being elected, is that you, you know, we've done a really good job here, I think the parties have always nominated people who are responsible and do good jobs, but there's no guarantee that that will overcome. And they are jobs where you do have a lot to learn, um, people become certified.
I would ask Wayne and then perhaps move that to a salary, a, a, a employee status.
It's not required that they be elected officials.
In the state statutes.
In the state statutes.
And what, and do you have any idea what the history is, why we did it here?
Most places, they were elected right from the start, you know, from the golden time, and other towns, as time went on, would change and make them appointed. You don't even, the treasurer does not need to be elected either, you must have a treasurer.
Right.
And the tax collector cannot also be the treasurer, but you can, your treasurer can be an employee.
So, okay.
No, I just, I, I think those three positions jumped out at me, town clerk, treasurer, and tax collector, uh, for potential conversion to town employee.
I hate to rely on luck.
Yeah. Well, also, if there is an issue, potentially, there is not right now, but if there is an issue, who does that person report to, who is able to manage as far as annual review and pointing out issues, and then able to be corrected and moving forward?
The taxpayers. So the taxpayers, and, and there actually is no, um.
That's a difficult process.
There's no, no taxpayers to do it.
I believe us in a very difficult position.
Yeah.
Good town.
Yeah.
All right, that's. But that's, is that a big change, yes?
Yes, that's a big change.
Big change, yeah, and that will be controversial for the parties.
Really?
Correct.
Yes.
I would imagine.
I don't know why, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, you know, the, the jobs are very administrative.
Correct.
And should come with a job description.
Yeah.
Like, like everyone else, and be subject to the same employment and HR standards that everybody else is, and, and for the most part, they are here, we've got great people, as Kate said, but you could find yourself in the future with an interesting challenge.
To me, they're so skill-set specific.
Yeah.
Whereas other public servants and elected officials, there's a certain skill set that's required, but not to the detail, I feel, like tax collector needs, um, that we could cast the net much wider for the right individual if we had that opportunity, and they didn't have to be resident, so that's.
And certain educational standards or certifications, credentials, right? Yeah. Okay.
While we're still on chapter two, section six, uh, item B, said, "All appointments by the Board of Selectmen, uh, appointive officers, all appointments by the Board of Selectmen shall be affirmed by affirmative vote of the first selectman and at least two other members of the Board of Selectmen." When I read this, what I thought was, you know, normally in a board of five, it's majority rules, right? The way that this has been drafted, it says that it has to be a majority that must.
Include the first selectman.
The first selectman, which sort of gives the first selectman a de facto veto.
Yes.
On any appointee. That, to me, that doesn't seem like that's, you know, consistent with our general thought process for, you know, majority rules in a, in a voting process. So, I would just point that out as, as something for discussion.
Okay.
But, um, I just want to make sure on five, going back to the terms, if I may, just that we were looking to either address our body or specifically, and perhaps even all other elected town officials, with the Board of Ed to clean up that, so it's, there's more continuity between all elected bodies? So we're talking about ours specifically, about the January, December, and then, you know, Board of Finance falls into that too?
Yes.
So we would also.
I think you should do them all uniformly, that's my opinion, but.
Do you mean having some?
No, I would say, the terms should all start right now, you know, some terms start the first, Monday after, you know, some are the day after, some are not till January.
Right.
I would put them all in one bucket.
I agree, and then have qualified, that was the other, what does that mean, just being sworn in? Because I know that is a criteria in order to begin serving.
Qualified means you have to be an elector, right?
You have to have won the race, right? So there's a high. If you won the race, basically, if somebody, you see this on any number of boards where you're appointing people, their term may have expired, say, on June 30th, 2020, they stay in that position until their successor.
Correct.
Has been sworn in, you know, appointed, sworn in, in place.
But here, this is for, five D says elected officials.
Mm-hmm.
Until they have qualified.
You know, and ask Wayne what the legal version, what the legal meaning behind qualified is, but, um.
So I know what you mean, as far as an appointed position, which is sort of rolling, but this is specific to the elected.
Yeah, so, so for example, if one of you had not been available to be sworn in before your term was supposed to be starting, technically, your predecessor would have stayed on as a selectman until the replacement was sworn in.
Oh, interesting. I think maybe, I would even like to say specifically that they are sworn in, because it's not even mentioned anywhere, I would add it. Yeah, that's a requirement.
Yes.
It's not even stated.
Qualified also has a meaning that if you're elected and you no longer live in Darien, you're no longer qualified.
True, true.
So there is a qualification factor there.
But do we, um, specify that anywhere?
I will ask Wayne to provide the, that was about, you know, some definition of qualified, what that means there, um, and then whether do we add in sworn in, you know, begin their term after being sworn in by town clerk, or by whomever. Okay, so that was I had for five.
I, I have always understood qualified, but it's not a capitalized qualified here, so it's not really a defined term, um, to be someone who is, uh, an elector of the town, meaning registered to vote, um, with appropriate residency, those things. Okay.
Um, I'm on ten. Does anybody else have anything to?
Conversation there?
Um, do, do we want to finish up with six?
Okay, no, no, keep going on six, I'm sorry.
Is that something that we wanted to, uh, address, uh, to change the language of, to make it a simple majority as opposed to, uh, requiring the, the first selectman and two votes?
Yeah, I'm not supportive of that, I think there's a reason why you have a first selectman, obviously I'm biased because I'm the first selectman, but you're elected separately. There's a higher standard given to the vetting of someone that serves as the first selectman, um, there's a higher level of, of diligence, uh, and accountability that I think is required of the first selectman, and I think it's, um, I'm not supportive of making that change. The voters, the voters make that change ultimately, right? They decide who they want their first selectman to be.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're just going to go through all of these at our next time, either vote gay or nay to move them forward, so that's, to me, that's on the list, David, and I was going to address it at the next one, we kind of pick them all through.
Um, I have, I have an item for section eight, under vacancies. The selectmen or first selectmen vacancies filled pursuant to the, uh, general statute nine twenty-two, uh, but for other elected boards and commissions, if I understood it when I read it, uh, they're filled, um, by the remaining board members.
Yes.
There's a vacancy, so they're not filled the same way. So when I think of, you know, the Board of Finance or, uh, you know, the, the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen, should the general statute apply to those other boards as well?
Not true. Good question for Wayne.
And to have a link there would be helpful, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what came up for me.
Yeah, no, 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 absolutely. Krista, you had something on ten?
Yeah, I was down at ten, this, first was more of an informational question, do we approve assistant town clerks?
No, the town clerk approves them, oh, actually, subject to the Board of Selectmen.
I had that same question, I don't ever remember approving the assistant town clerks.
Because I, I have asked that all three of the, um, all three of the staff members and the assistant, and the town clerks are appointed assistant town clerks, but I recall it happened before you, so.
Okay, I didn't know if their title was different, or that we just hadn't been doing it, so.
And do we need to do it? I mean, we should dig into that a little bit.
Well, if, if we ultimately end up deciding to move the town clerk to an employee status, then it seems like that would not be appropriate.
Right, I would agree.
We pass ten?
We're not going to go on ten B, guys. The Board of Selectmen compensation.
No, we serve it out.
No, we will continue to serve our community.
Serve it out, compensation, yes.
For our love, civic duty.
The official bonds, the Board of Selectmen are the ones, the only ones prescribed to have bonds.
They have what?
On performance. It's, I find it interesting and confusing.
Can, can you read that for us, because I don't have it.
Sure, "Such official officers or officials as may be required to do so by the Board of Selectmen shall, before entering on their respective official duties, execute to the town in the form prescribed by the Town Council and file with the town clerk a surety company bond in a penal sum to be fixed by the Board of Selectmen, conditioned upon the faithful performance of such official duties. Premiums for such bonds shall be paid by the town." I, I would say that we, we do this, that, that we have sort of delegated the administrative duty of requiring surety bonds to the, the, the town administrator, um, and, and we do do that on the normal course of business, uh, but it's never come before the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. So do we want to request that that language be revised, or is it just assumed because the staff? I think it says it should be fixed by the Board of Selectmen, and it does not come before the Board of Selectmen, and I think it should be.
I don't know when it last came before the Board of Selectmen.
Well, so which officials would that be set for?
The treasurer, the town clerk, finance, the ones that handle the big dollars.
Interesting, okay.
So let's get some more information from Wayne about this one, too. If there's something we should be doing and that, and we aren't, let's make sure we are, or if it's not, no longer applicable, let's make sure we put into the charter an appropriate process.
Thank you, that was confusing to me.
Yeah.
I know that I'm newer, and maybe something that's happened, I just, I'm not, thank you.
Yeah, it's also interesting, you, you said the Director of Finance? Cause two, two of those, two of those are elected and one is a county.
Yeah, it's not an odd.
It's not about the election, it's about the fact that the, the money.
They handle the money.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, anything on section twelve? Not that we would ever remove anyone, can imagine doing that. Moving on to chapter three, Board of Selectmen. Moving on to chapter three, Board of Selectmen.
I was on section fourteen. I would be personally in favor of saying with two times a month, but we can put under discussion.
You'd like to leave it at two times a month?
I do.
So the only reason I suggested that is sometimes there's not a lot of business for the second meeting a month. And you could have a situation like, say, think back to September, your second meeting was September 27th. We had a...
A campaign.
You know, maybe we wouldn't have been able to have the meeting. But on the other hand, Wayne and I had this discussion, there is no penalty if you fail to have two meetings in a month.
Okay.
So...
I strongly feel that, I look at, the Board of Finance doesn't require twice a month? I don't think the Board of Education does, I don't know.
They do not.
Okay.
They practice pretty much.
Practice is one thing, requirement is, you know, this is what is written.
Yeah.
You must do what's written. And I just don't think we should have, I don't see why we have the duty to meet twice a month. Some ones, it doesn't make any sense. You may want to meet three times a month if it's really what we do during the budget season.
Sure.
I, I just think it, this kind of lack of flexibility is just kind of old fashioned. And maybe somebody who wrote the code was concerned that the Board of Selectmen wouldn't do their due diligence.
Had to have been a reason. I, I would say that even if we were to revise this to at least once a month, the likelihood is that more often than not, we will meet at least twice because of our obligations to seat people for appointments.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Why write it in if you don't have to? I mean, I...
Then sort of on that same idea, it says, quote, "It shall determine its own rules of procedure." Is that stated anywhere to hold special meetings?
What do you mean?
It says, "The board shall meet twice a month." "The board shall provide a method for the calling of special meetings. It shall determine its own rules of procedure."
Two separate sentences.
Correct, I'm sorry, two separate sentences. Are those identified in the code?
You know, I'm not sure about the rules of procedure. The board always follows the state regulations in terms of calling for special meetings.
Right.
And I don't see how you could actually do anything that is less restrictive than what the state requires under the FOI law.
And Robert's Rules of Order collectively.
But that's why I was surprised it said "it shall determine its own rules of procedure." I found that odd.
That's not unusual, you know, usually every board has their own rules. Some places, they're written formally.
But on how to call a special meeting?
I'm thinking of scenario, no, those are separate.
No, no, apparently, they're two separate, you know, two separate things.
Oh, I'm sorry, they're not referencing back to the...
Yeah. You know, the rules of procedure might include things like, at the first meeting of the month, you know, you'll only do appointments at the first meeting of the month.
That was your name, yeah.
You know.
Well, "the board shall provide a method for the calling of special meetings." What is that method?
We use the, we use the state rules, the FOI rules, that say it has to be called, it has to be 24 hours in advance. And it has to be posted with the town clerk.
No, it was a scenario where the first select, we set our meeting schedule. The first selectman, who, that's obviously hypothetical and not anywhere reflective of our current times, but that the remaining selectmen want to have a meeting, the first selectman doesn't. How does the selectman call this meeting?
Um, yeah, that's a good question.
That's what I meant, not, not warrant it, I meant actually calling it, actually putting it together.
I'm not, I'm not sure that there's a provision for the first selectman to disallow it. You know, if a majority of the board wishes to meet on a certain topic.
Right.
I don't have, I don't have, you know, I have, the authority of the first selectman is to do the will of the board.
I think that's one that's gonna require some...
Yeah, we're just getting a list, this is, I'm not looking for answers, I'm just saying, down the line, if we cut down to one meeting, fine, and then an issue arises, how...
Do you have the right as a selectman to demand a special meeting?
Well, what are the terms? It can't be just one person?
Yeah.
Okay, that's something else.
I have for, for section fifteen, I'd actually like to discuss with all of you the prospect of the first selectman being an ex officio to additional boards and commissions, such as the Parks and Rec Commission and the Police Commission. I think there have been times in my length of service here where there could have been better liaison on certain projects and issues if there would be an ex officio capacity to those otherwise autonomous agencies.
What agents, what commissions or boards are you not ex officio?
Police Commission.
Police Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission.
Just those two?
I believe so.
You are on it?
Planning Zoning Commission, I am ex officio.
But isn't it just police?
I think it should, I think it should be expressly stated in this section fifteen to which bodies the first selectman is ex officio.
It says, "Shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, agencies, and offices in the charge of persons, boards, or commissions appointed by the Board of Selectmen, except the Police Commission." So I would say you would be because we appoint Park and Rec.
I would assume, yes.
So you should be by charter. Police Commission, I would support that, certainly. But I think that needs to be changed.
That's a difference, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have that.
The other, a new addition to this section of first selectmen, and I don't know how to word it properly, but the idea is that the first selectman serves as a liaison and on behalf of the town, a voting member of regional and state agencies for which that liaison is critical to, critical or beneficial to the town. You know, this, our charter didn't contemplate Westcog, for example. And the chief elected official, first selectman or mayor, is the voting member of Westcog. So I think it should somehow be included in the duties.
So we should add in something that you're already doing?
Correct.
As a party, yes.
Yeah.
And do identify who that person should be, in case there was any dispute at a later date.
Correct, so, you know, first selectmen or their designated, for example.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Fifteen, sixteen?
Sixteen, I had, the board's selectman appoints the town administrator?
Yes.
Yeah.
You appoint most of the department heads?
Or the first selectman, okay.
Eighteen, advisory commissions. I just wanna, it probably isn't for doing anything different with the charter, Kate, but I want to try and make sure that we codify receiving annual reports from all these advisory committees, commissions, prior to our reauthorizing them. So, you know, November, December timeframe, before they all come up for reappointment. We want to make sure we have the reports.
How many do we have?
I don't have the list in front of me. Sustainability Committee, Advisory Board of Health, they change from time to time.
Yeah, some of them, they go away after a year or two, some of them stay for quite a while.
TV seventy-nine.
They're all on the website as other, other agencies, I know.
Okay. Uh, all right. Chapter four. Okay, great.
And five, we went...
I think we just did one through four tonight, didn't we?
I thought I had five on it, but, um...
Yeah, it's not on two, but...
Yeah, the only thing I was looking for in five, your first one, the third Tuesday, November, which has been problematic. It doesn't happen regularly, maybe every five years or so. It becomes, it's the Thursday of, or the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, which members have had a problem in the past. Yeah, I, my own proposed change of language was to, that they would meet no later than the third Tuesday in November. Like, to that effect. But I would defer to the Board of Finance.
So it doesn't, it doesn't really reflect reality, though, right? It says, "shall, shall meet annually on the third Tuesday in November."
Yeah, so they schedule a meeting for the third Tuesday in November.
Right, but it suggests that they, is, is, do they do something special at that meeting, or?
Yeah, they like the chairman.
I see, so it's their organized meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I read it.
Okay, got it.
We had one time at like eight o'clock in the morning, so all the members could go away for Thanksgiving.
Okay. I like the suggestion, I mean, Krista, no later than?
Yeah, you know, a little flexibility in certain places is beneficial.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I would defer to them, but do they need to appoint a clerk?
They do, yeah, they, um, they actually hire somebody now to do the minutes. So I think they technically do choose a secretary, but, um, I'll add that to the list.
I would defer to, if, again, defer to them.
I did have a question on four. Under the duties of the town council, it says, "Serving as legal advisor to the town." Does that mean he's not a legal advisor to the district?
He's not?
He's not?
No, he's not.
No, they have their own.
And, and, but I'm just saying, this is the town charter, how does that separation occur? Where does that, where does that bifurcation happen?
It's a, that's a really good question, because the town, the, the district is part of the town, they are our biggest department.
Yep.
And they're identified elsewhere in the, in this document.
I guess the question would be, where is the enabling language for the Board of Education to hire independent counsel from the town council?
Sounds like town council has basically been, tell, don't go there.
I'd like to be informed about it, I'd like to be educated about it.
Anyway, just a thought.
Back on five, Board of Finance, section twenty-two, the notification process for meetings. I just think that could be updated, as opposed, the language says, "Written or printed notices sent to the residents of each member or mailed to each member by the clerk." I think we can change that language.
Don't carry your pigeon.
Well, yeah. But it was interesting, that language is not repeated for the Board of Selectmen.
Probably because it was an old, it was an older version and just never updated, that's all.
I think that, that language probably needs to reflect the, what the state considers to be legal notice.
Absolutely.
At the time.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at what the language, what we can do.
Correct, right, what would be applicable, and do we want that language also further up under Board of Selectmen when we talked again about special meetings?
Yeah.
It's the same process, it's addressing the same process. It seems antiquated in, under Board of Finance, but it doesn't even spell it out under Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Oh, I moved on to six, but I hope, save that for next one.
Anybody have anything else before we move on? Great, good discussion. All right, we have two transfers tonight, and I want to thank Sean for being very patient with our charter discussion. We're going to discuss and take action on a transfer of $10,160 from the Board of Finance Reserve to replace the bay doors at the Nuroton Heights Fire Department. Sean, would you like to come forward and give us a little in-person overview of your request?
Sure.
Thank you.
Chief Sean Boland, Nuroton Heights Fire Department. Basically, last budget season, I put in for forty-one, forty-one thou, excuse me, forty-one thousand dollars for new bay doors, and we finally went out to bid. Bid opening was nine seventeen, we had two bids. One was, one was a low bid of thirty, roughly thirty-eight, thirty-eight, and then the other bid was basically fifty, fifty-one, fifty-one thousand, six, six, sixty dollars. And we did not go with the low bid due to the fact that the low bidder did not meet the specs that we sent out. And we actually did go, we did go back and we did ask him a couple of questions and try and see if the low bid would meet the specs, and they did not. So that's why I'm coming tonight to ask for the balance of the money to go with the higher bidder. And they're basically the same doors, like Nuroton Firehouse has, the same style and all that.
I have a procedural question first. Do we also have to vote on accepting, overstepping the low bid before we approve the transfer?
No, because it's the lowest qualified bid, and they did not meet the specifications. So I think Sean actually went above and beyond in order to give them an opportunity to meet the specifications.
Okay.
And they didn't want to do it.
No. And I don't, I don't know what paperwork you guys got, but basically, there were three diff, three, three parts that they didn't meet. One of them was the inch and three quarter, we were looking for a two-inch door, he was specing in an inch and three quarter. Some of the pe, some of the trim on the exterior, he wasn't specifying on replacing, we asked him about it. And then the last one was about the UV light.
Yep. Any questions for Sean?
That's called a scope review. That's called a scope review. The guy lost.
My question was more just on the document here, as far as the transfer itself. We see it's coming out of Board of Finance Reserve, the account name is not replaced, what account into which is this money going?
It's going into the account for replacing bay doors.
There's an account just for that?
Yeah.
And it's a own account?
Yes.
It's a capital account, yes.
I believe they're, they're awful specific.
Okay. That's what I just want to clarify, thank you.
Pardon?
Yeah, it's fine, okay.
She didn't want to let it go past you.
Any other questions for Sean, Kate? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $10,160 for the Nuroton Heights bay doors. David moves, you have a second? Kip seconds? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions, motion carries. Thanks again for your patience, Sean.
Thank you, the love of the doors.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another transfer of $16,920 from contingency, is this Board of Finance contingency?
This is the general funding contingency.
Okay, to employee education and tuition. Two, two employees are seeking tuition reimbursement.
Right, so similar to the union contracts, which provide for tuition reimbursement, we do, on a case-by-case basis, allow, you know, approve it for non-represented employees who, you know, they have to fill out an application, they have to justify why their department head has to sign off on it. And if we feel that it is beneficial to the town, we will approve it. So our, I'm not sure what her title is, our sanitarian is working towards her master's in public health. That's something you need to, to have to be a health director. And our payroll administrator is getting a master's degree in, in financial statistics. And we went, you know, went through and both department heads explained to us what their reasons were, how the degrees would benefit the town, the employees have had to sign agreements. They have to get a certain grade to be reimbursed. They also have to agree to stay for a certain amount of time after they complete their degree, or they have to repay us. We don't...
We don't cover the full tuition, we cover a percentage of it, so the employees have skin in the game. And the, the amount that we cover, we've based on UConn's in-state tuition. So, you know, if you wanna go to a, you know, a less expensive school, you might be able to get more of it covered. If you choose to go to an expensive school, you know, we're only covering up to a certain portion.
I very much appreciate that the employees are seeking higher education in their field of expertise. I think it is terrific for the organization. Any questions about tuition reimbursement?
And how long do they stay, what are the terms under which? I believe we require two years? Post, post-creation.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Sarah moves, and a second? Krista seconds? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed abstentions, motion carries. Great, thank you. All right, we have three re, well, we have one new recommendation for appointment and two reappointments this evening. We'll take them individually. I'll entertain a motion to recommend to the RTM for appointment, Craig Young to the Five Mile River Commission, um, if approved, he will serve a four-year term. Sarah moves, and a second?
Second.
Kip seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion carries. We have the reappointment of Craig Flaherty to the Sewer Commission for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty twenty-two, sorry.
So we change that. So moved.
Krista moves, and a second? David seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion carries. And the reappointment of David Humphrey as an alternate to the Architectural Review Board for a term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Sarah moves, and a second? Kip seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion carries. Okay, great, we have, uh, meeting minutes of October twentieth, regular meeting. Corrections, additions?
On the first page, under your second bullet point of your report, I just think there's something missing, and maybe it should read that, "Are wrestling with the false positives that continue to be present." Adding the word "be" from the antigen test? Just grammar.
I think you say "to present," because it's, um, as a, um, the test is presented. Yes, "present," it's, um, the verb there.
Sorry, Kim. I think, I think we believe that it is correct as written.
I put it in exactly as she wrote it.
I mean, you could say "present themselves," but.
Don't worry about it, I thought, I thought it was.
Any other suggested edits? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Sarah moves, and a second?
Second.
Krista's seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, minutes passed. Okay. Do we have any public comment, Kate, tonight?
No.
Okay, terrific. Um, agenda review, I have one item for agenda review. I, I know we have several things that are, you know, percolating, but, um, there was a water quality report recently issued, I believe, by Save the Sound. And I would love someone to come and talk to us about that, um, maybe it's Bill Cavers, I believe, or we might have that in the works.
I do think I put that on a future agenda already?
Great, okay, perfect.
I'll make a note here.
Okay. What else?
So we're still working on the grant? We're just waiting to hear it in state.
Open, open.
The gifts? Yes, yeah. Okay, no, that's fine. No, it's just, you know, okay, so we saw the, the length of this stuff, it's just complicated. Because it's in multiple places, um, I think what I would ask, my thought is that it shouldn't be in one place, not in each individual board. Because not all boards have the authority. I think it'd be easier to put it into one place, um.
I think that's a good idea.
If you, okay. We wanna chip away on it, or however you wanna present it, I just. I think, yeah, let me, let me work on that and, um, because I, I do have a lot of thoughts already put together on it. Um, but let me work on maybe if we ask them to take it out of all the multiple places it's in and create just one gift section.
Yep. Anything else?
And when we continue to chip away, six through eleven? Yeah, um, did anybody have any issues with the calendar? No. Yeah, so take a look at it, and if you have issues, send, send them to me. We put it back on for the next meeting. I do wanna put that on the next meeting because, you know.
Okay. And can we confirm for our Police Commission meeting on Thursday? Is that here or there?
We'll confirm for you.
Okay.
Is it four, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
They have been meeting back at the Police Department, but we'll, we'll send out a confirmation.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves, and a second?
Second.
David seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, thank you all very much.
And I have some envelopes up here.
Oh, I didn't think it, okay.